The new fire truck and F, which is certi-- yeah, certified.
Certificate.
Yeah, that there. So, all right, so any other amendments that anybody has?
It is.
They came late. It came after--
One that I went out on Friday. There was an agenda packet that went out on Friday, Lynn.
Oh, I see.
And then a supplement packet that went out Monday morning or Monday sometime, all right? So, if you have one that has A and F underlined, that's the difference between the one that went out to you on Friday. And obviously, when we post, we have to post our agenda at least 48 hours before a meeting, and we have to put it on the website 48 hours, and that got done. And once that gets done, you need to officially, I really don't know if it requires a motion or not, but you do need to, if you're going to amend your agenda, you have to take that up as your first item of business. And so, really, it's about if there's no objections, and I would encourage you to support amending this agenda because the resolution is required for the bond vote, and the certificate of mileage is due by February 20th, all right? So, if you want to get mileage, you're mileageade. So, I would encourage that you accept those two amendments.
And I just want to add some clarification for number H to the strategic formal hiring interview process. It's going to be broader than what I just sent out for review as a possibility, so that anybody outside is in a sense to offer. And I will update you on some other information that I stumbled on today. Long phone call. So, any other thing, any other amendments? Hearing none, then we have no scheduled visitors, and so we'll go right to approval of minutes. And who wants to go first?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jeff made the motion. Mark took the second. And does somebody have any changes?
I had just two. Page one, under Addison County Regional Plan. One, two, three, four, five, six, lying down. Alderman Kinnick pointed out the population of impacts on Main Street compared to Route 17 is not a one-to-one comparison. I think it should read, pointed out the population impacted on Main Street compared to Route 17 is not a one-to-one comparison.
Well, I thought we could take out the word of and leave impacts the way it is.
That makes even more sense.
That works?
Yep.
Rennie's wife?
Yep.
Okay. Why we're writing that same paragraph. I believe I said next to the bottom line where it says, "City is looking for a truck bypass," I believe it was truck route.
Okay, that the mayor said, "You're looking for a truck route."
Okay. Jeff, back to you.
Okay, page three. Second line from the bottom. Senior Alderman Perry pointed out that the city charter could be amended, but, a comma, but, no immediate action taken to implement a local tax. I think reads more clearly.
Gee, I read that and I didn't catch that.
Out of commas, is that it?
Out of comma.
Out of comma before amendment.
Delete, take.
And put.
Taken after action.
But no immediate action.
Taken.
That was it for me. Rennie, you got some others?
No, I don't think so.
Under Mayor's report, then, where the Cracker Barrel, February, should be February instead of January, and I'll update you more on that when I get down to my section. Any other corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Questions on the warrants, Mel?
Lot of salt is in that warrant. I think the only, I don't, you know, one of the things is after the last meeting, I did go ahead and send the check to the Addison County Chamber of Commerce. And so, you see that at the bottom of, even though it was just paid, the way the warrant gets printed, the checks, the check that has been cut shows up at the bottom. So, that was done. I don't know that there's, you'll see most all, if not all, of the social service agencies have supplied their reports and therefore releasing those checks. So, you see just a few of those that were remaining, and I think that's really about it.
Right. Any questions, Mel? If not, we will start. And there's no citizens here. We'll go for business. And for 5A, I'm going to turn this portion over to Rennie because I am a member of the Virginians and disclosing that I'm a member of the Virginians Fire Department. So, I'll let Rennie do this part for me. Thank you, Rennie.
Okay, so, we, on item 5A, we need the, somebody to make a motion to adopt the resolution. Do you think we need to read the resolution? No? Okay, someone to--
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second, Lynn? Any discussion over the--
Does the resolution need to point out that it will not exceed 500,000?
It does. It should say that.
Not in the resolution.
I don't have the resolution here.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't?
No.
Because on the, I'm reading--
On the warning it does, but the resolution does not.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it matters that the--
Yes, I think it does.
Okay.
Yeah, what this is, this comes out of, Joan, this is actually, this resolution form is actually, comes out of the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, all right? And so, the first step is to pass a resolution that you're going to, that we, in essence, saying, "We can't pay for this out of regular funds." And so, I don't know that this necessarily needs the money in it. It's just basically saying that it can't be paid, and therefore, a bond is required. That's what I'm saying.
That was my question. I'm not trying to say that there's an error. I just wanted to make sure that it shouldn't be--
Exactly.
Exactly like the last one that we used when we went to the bond bank for the other fire trucks.
Okay.
And I followed it exactly, except switched it where it needed to be.
So, you almost have to think of this--
So, I would say you don't have--
Yeah, you don't need it. You need to think of this really about A, B, and C, all right? The first step is a resolution that we need a fire truck, and we don't have $500,000 in available funds to pay for it and need to bond. That's what the resolution is. And then, if that's passed, then we move on to B about the question, and then, along with the required informational meeting. So, I think they all go, they go together. They will go together to the bond bank.
Okay, the way it is.
Yeah, I believe that it is.
Any further discussion on that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm--
Any opposed? One extension? Back to you. Thank you very much, Rennie. We need signatures, and do we have a copy of--
This is my copy, but I mean, this is a clean copy. We could use this.
Yeah, we got one here.
Yep, so everybody would just sign by their name, please? Thank you. Okay, we have to adopt the annual meeting warning. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the warning.
And Rennie second it? Any discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And here is another document in which you need to sign. And get that back to Joan.
So, obviously, Joan anticipated you adopting that resolution. So, it was, Article 2 is the bond vote.
All right, then we, City of Virginians is warning a public hearing, information hearing pursuant to VSA 2680G. The qualified voters of the City of Virginians are hereby warned and notified that the public information hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 27th. Excuse me, February 27th, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Virginians Fire Station Meeting Room, located at 50 Green Street, for the purpose of hearing comments and addressing questions regarding a bond vote to replace an existing fire truck. The estimated cost of the new fire truck is $500,000. The article, as it appears on the City Australian ballot, is as follows. Shall the bond of the City of Virginians, in the amount not to exceed $500,000, be issued for the purpose of purchasing a new fire truck--
Go ahead.
--to replace engine 366-- This says 326. That has to be changed to--
It's 316.
316. And actually, it's engine 1. We don't go by those three numbers anymore.
Okay, so you wanted to say--
Engine 1. Should be engine 1.
So, the warning said, the warning said 316, so--
Well, that's what Jimmy Brewer called it.
That's what he told us, all right?
Because I originally had engine 1.
Don't let me change something, the chief. I'm not trying to change anything the chief is putting. Let it, let it, leave it as the chief put it. I'm not overriding him, okay?
So, then it should be done 316.
316.
316.
So, the way that we, you know, just statutorily, you're required to have an informational meeting not more than 10 days prior to the vote. And it was Joan, in my opinion, to not have that informational meeting within the annual meeting. And you've already adopted this warning, but to have this informational meeting at the night of a city council meeting. And we've warned this for 6 o'clock, and the assumption that the meeting on the 27th would start at 5:30, and then it would recess at 6 o'clock, where you would conduct that informational meeting, and then close the informational meeting, and then let it continue on with your regular meeting.
And I'm going to ask Rennie to take charge of that hearing.
Oh, okay.
So, we should have a motion to set the informational meeting for Tuesday, February 27th at 6:00 PM.
I will make that motion.
So, Lowell made the motion, and Rennie seconded it. Any other further discussion?
Firefighters who are on the panel putting this all together here.
We will have plenty of firefighters here, I can assure you.
Okay. If no other further discussions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Addison County Regional Plan, Transportation Section. I get more confused every time I read that thing.
So, yeah, so I know you're all looking to read another, read the 55 pages again, or 53 pages, but I will tell you that following the meeting that you held last time, I believe, right? Right, okay, right? I then took all of your changes and drove them down to Regional Planning the morning of January 14th. And those have gone to Josh, and I should, I guess I should have copied my 55 pages, but I wrote, "Please return to Mel Hawley" on my copy. And we believe that they do have it down there. And we also believe that all of the changes that you all talked about have been incorporated into the new, into the proposed Transportation Section. But I do think that you should still look at it. Now, the Regional Planning, no different than our, the process for our Planning Commission, you know, they have a public hearing. If they take some testimony and they want to change it, they end up having to have another public hearing, all right? And I don't want to say, you know, necessarily, you know, let's live with this, all right? But, you know, keep in mind that, you know, they want, they do want to move on to their Energy Section, all right? So, I think that they, their process is a little strange. They allow staff to make all those changes, and they've, I believe that they've changed everything. And I've given you a couple of pages of what-- I'm sorry, there's one, there's just one page.
It's supposed to be a truck route. That didn't get changed.
Okay, so I'd have to, without me having my copy, but--
But that's one thing that didn't get changed.
Okay, all right.
Pointing out to Mel, just above 6, page 636, fourth line up, alternate including a, says bypass around the City of Virginians. I had asked that it be truck route, so that it stays common throughout the document.
And I, I didn't see on this page, but there were two recommendations that I made about changing timeframes. Both of them having to do with the truck routes, actually. So that they would be looked at earlier than they had had in the plan, and that doesn't show on this list of--
Well, it's not going to be, so I can tell you--
Unless they consider it minor, you know?
Well, I, and I, like I say, I'm really sorry I didn't copy my 55 pages where I could compare one to another, but on page 22, where it says, "Recommended actions for Gen's reconstruct intersection at 22A South Water McDonough Drive," that says short-term now.
Oh, it does.
That says short-term in this latest proposal.
Oh, okay.
All right? And I don't know why everything isn't indicated in there. Address congestion forecasted in 2030 at Pantan Road, that is still considered long-term. But that first one is short-term.
Yep, and there was another spot where this--
I'm going to go to--
Something to do with trucks also, I think.
And I know at the, there was one at the top of, about, remember about, they should study--
Yes, that's true.
The reclassification.
That's in this list.
That's in that list, okay.
That's in this list, yeah.
All right, so-- So, I have that short-term there.
Yeah.
Over here, over here, on page 32, "Explore and create truck routes that address concerns of Virginians and neighboring communities." That now says short-term.
Okay, okay.
So, the intent of this being on this document is, and it will stay on until at least their hearing, I take it?
Yep, yep.
And so, it's for us as a council to read it and see if there's other things that need changing or that didn't get changed that we submitted.
Right, because their hearing, I think that's what it says, the hearing is on--
Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day.
Okay, so any other comments, questions on that? Hearing none? Part-time, temporary administrative assistant for police, Mel?
So, what I'm requesting here is, according to George, they are absolutely swamped at the police department relative to filing and paperwork and whatever related to cases, to the point that there's not a light at the end of the tunnel, according to George. George has been in touch with Stephanie Taylor, who is the administrative assistant for state police, and she's agreeable to working some part-time temporary position at the police department to, in essence, get caught up. The estimated amount of time and duration that we're looking at is about 80 hours total, and whether or not that's, you know, 10 weeks of eight hours or eight weeks of 10 hours, that's what we're looking at, is about 80 hours. And when you take wages for that position, plus workers' compensation, MEDI and FICA, it equals about $1,600. And, you know, obviously, the, you know, the city council gives me a lot of authority relative to spending money, but I've never felt that I had authority to create line items in a budget with zero in it unless it was grant-related. The only time that I ever create line items is that if we receive some grant, I need to create a revenue and an expense line item to capture the expenses and capture the revenue to keep it balanced. However, I don't go, I don't go changing the budget. So, what I'm seeking is either a nod or formal action to allow an amendment to the police department budget with a line item for part-time temporary administrative assistant with the knowledge that not more than $1,600 would be spent on that. So, that's what I'm looking for. I will tell you, I sent Mike and George an email that I copied Mayor Danles. When I go through the police department budget, I told George, I said, "You know, part of the thing is the bottom line can't, the bottom line really can't change." And not that we run budgets based on bottom line, but the bottom line can't change. And I've told, I told George in an email that I copied Mike on that if the city, I'm going to recommend that we do this because one of the things is that, you know, if you kind of, if I, the way that I look at it, if it's all going to be done in-house, it probably, you know, in all due respect to the police officers, administrative assistants can do things, a trained administrative assistant from state police can do things a lot more efficiently than police officers, all right? Number two, you know, I really want police officers out in the road. I really don't want them filing all day and putting away folders, all right? And number three, if it's got to be done, at some point, it becomes overtime, all right? So, you know, in this instance, you know, I would support George's request, but I've made it crystal clear to him that it's $1,600, and he's still, I mean, I'm ultimately responsible for everybody's bottom line, but he's got a join in this thing that if it means, you know, putting off all other purchases through the end of the year that are discretionary, so be it, all right? So, that's what I'm looking for.
I'll make the motion to authorize the part-time temporary administrative assistant for the police department, which requires the amendment of the budget in the amount of, should I put the amount of?
Well, with the, you know, it's, the budget's not going to change, you know, with an understanding that not more than $1,600 is being spent out of that created line item.
With the amount of amendment of the budget to, for $1,600.
Hold a second.
Second.
Hold a second, Ed. Rennie made motion? Comments, questions? Oops, go ahead.
Kind of looks here like a straight time salary, but it's down a little bit anyway, right? Well, let me back up.
And so, right now, it is, we are a little bit, you know, right now, if you use George's as an example because he's salary, and you do the math, we are 55.71% into the year. And so, that line item is 52.66. So, yes, at this point, we are a little under, but you only need to go one line, the next line, Lowell, where it says it overtime, and it really isn't just overtime, it's overtime or premium pay. Anytime that our police officers work on a holiday, they are paid premium pay, and so, we call it overtime because the descriptions are limited to 26 characters. But anyway, we have, we are on the, we are on the other side of holidays at this point. If you, if you were to chart out our holidays, you know, even though we're a little bit above 50%, we are beyond 50% of our holidays through the fiscal year. So, that's not a problem. But when you go down through it, I went through it line by line, Lowell, and I can tell you, as I mentioned to Mike, I think that it's going to be a challenge with or without the $1,600. I'm just, I'm just being right up front with you. This thing is tight and will need to be, it'll be, it'll need to be monitored, you know, continuously.
Two questions, Mel.
Sure.
So, is Chief Merkel in agreement that he will attempt to make that $1,600 up over the course of the year? I mean, I know you've asked to have him, what was his response?
He has not responded to that email. I, you know, I don't know that I got an aye aye, sir, either, but, you know, he, you know, he knows that we don't have a money print machine up at City Hall. So, he hasn't responded to that. But I think I've made the expectation crystal clear.
Okay. Second question. Is this anticipated to be an annual occurrence, or are there measures that can be put in place that they can stay on top of it once they get cleaned up?
You know, I, I'm not going to guarantee anything, you know? Part of this is, is, part of this problem, you know, we do not have an administrative assistant over there, all right? And part of the backlog is not the result of the police department, it's the result of the work imposed upon the police department. So, if, you know, so I can't necessarily guarantee that. So, if you're, I think it'd be premature for me to ask that. I don't, you know, I don't want to commit to myself, commit that. And I, but I do think that when we get around the budget time, you know, I think when we go through this, and if it is very, very efficient way to do thing, that's all great and it's done. One thing I, you know, that George and I talked about, I mean, if this can be done with $800, it's $800, all right? You know, he thinks that there's about 80 hours, so we don't, we don't really know that, number one. Number two, if it works out, great, you know, I mean, maybe that's something that we might consider during budget, but I wouldn't rule that out, you know?
All right, thank you.
Ready?
Good.
I just want to bring up something that I brought up. I don't know what's around the time that we built the police station or what, but that my prediction was that ultimately, we would have to do our own dispatching. The state police would not do it, and I believe that will happen. And that person, whatever hours that they may be on, or persons, would also have administrative duties, because realistically, if you have a police department, that is an active police department with cases, there is not enough, you don't want to have, just what Mel said, you don't want to have police officers in the station doing paperwork. You want them on the road. That's what their job is. I've managed other police departments and had to hire administrative personnel so that we keep the cops on the road. There's a lot of paperwork associated with being a police officer, and it's going to catch up with us. So, we might as well start thinking about the fact that this is all going to happen to us at some point.
I will, I will say, you know, I've been doing this a long time too, Rennie, but one of the things is, and nothing against the policeman of old, nothing against them, all right? But I can tell you, the policeman of new, they know Word, they know Excel, they can run, they can run computers. They, they have, a lot of them have very good clerical skills, all right? And so, I don't think that this should, this should not mean that police officers can scratch out their paperwork and leave it with the secretary. It sure as hell better not mean that, because that's not where we, that's not what we live in today, all right? But, you know, the mountain of paperwork that we, that they end up having to do with cases, you know, it's not good for that to be just piling up over there. It's really, it's, that's a problem.
I was only going to ask if there was any money in administration that could be put towards the police department for that position? I was looking at it to see what was--
Well, if you, if you're just looking at wages, the answer's no.
Okay.
So, if you just look at my line item, Joan and Melissa, you can see where there is anything there, really.
Any other further--
But I know what you're getting at, is to actually, you're trying to see if we, you could actually move $1,600 from one place to another.
Well, maybe not 16, but maybe 6, you know, 600 or something like that, I just--
But the idea is that of the almost $900,000 in the police budget, Chief Merkel's going to find $1,600 in that existing, and we're just adding a new line to the police's. And somehow, a little bit here and a little bit here will create a new line that will say 16.
Yeah. What I, what I would not do is start charging an administrative assistant to a straight time police officer line item. I think that that's juggling the bucks, and I wouldn't-- I think that that's juggling the books and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. So, but, but to Lowell's point, you know, there is some, there is some room there, all right, a little bit.
Any other comments, questions, if not, move the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos, so carried. Certificate of Highway Mileage.
So the original...
What do we do here, Mel?
Well...
I got it pretty blue on.
You do?
Yes.
Do you...
It printed blue for some reason when I ran it, except for the numbers are in black.
So right small, this is really the, the, I copied, put this in your packet, it's really designed for three, it's still designed for three member boards of selectmen, if you can imagine that. There's got to be about four left in Vermont. But anyway, a year ago, there actually was a change, and we added Commodore Drive to our mileage certificate in the anticipation of that road becoming a city street. And because of the legal issues related to Wanda Green and a shed that may or may not be on her property, or, or that of Peter Kahn, I don't want to take that road, and I don't want to take a legal, I spent enough money on legal fees already, like yesterday. So, so anyway, my point is, is that those mileage were already put on a year ago, and so this really just shows no, no change in our mileage. So again, down in the left-hand column, there's three lines for seven people to sign. Right small.
Okay, that covers that. City managers and city clerks, performance evaluations, Jeff?
So in your packets came what should have been marked draft, three documents. What was not included in the packet, however, is the clerk treasurer job description, which has actually been forwarded to City Hall, and we can get that out to everyone to look at. These, the job descriptions were intended to have Mel and Joan review, make certain that we sort of have all of our dots in the right places, and they have, are able to give us some input, and then we can continue the discussion about those job descriptions.
Does anybody want this when it comes out to you in Word versus a PDF, so that you want to do some track changing and put some notes in here that gives Mark and Jeff some idea of what everybody has in mind, is, or just PDF work?
Or just direct your comments to either one of us, and we, we can do that as well. That'd be just fine. I'm sure that would work for either one of us. The evaluation forms that were included, I will confess, are strictly lifted from the internet. There is a lot of information on the internet about evaluation processes for both of these positions. One of the things that was important in all of the discussion was that the city council participate in the evaluation process. So I like these forms because it would encourage every one of us to participate, which of course would mean that every one of us would need to spend more time in City Hall and interact with our employees. The process that is included with these is pretty straightforward. We need to determine dates so that we can proceed with an annual evaluation. So I would just ask that everyone review these, and if you have any comments, shoot them our way. Mark, did you want to add anything?
The other evaluation we're looking at is what we just finished putting together for the school, or the superintendent of schools. We did sort of the same thing with that position, is we recreated the job description so that there was a clear job description that was completely in line with the evaluation, because there's no point in evaluating duties and responsibilities if you haven't actually outlined what the duties and responsibilities are. So the two, we're going hand in hand, which is why we're trying to get the job description solid for both of these positions, so that not only can we have good evaluation structure, but we can also have a good hiring structure. We know what we're looking for, if we know what we're looking for, we know what to ask. So this is really kind of the first step, is once we have the, the job description solid and we're happy with what, what they say and what they do, then we can build the other two things pretty quickly.
So I think then the next step is actually input from everyone at the table on these two forms.
So one link, Jeff, I haven't read this, but you know, you and I had just a little exchange about, of a subject called hats.
Yes, we did.
And, and not that this needs to be settled tonight, but I do think that it's important for the city council at some point to, to understand all of the hats that I wear and, and determine how you're going to deal with those hats, and however you deal with it, you want to incorporate the result of those decisions into this job description, because I, what I'm envisioning is at some point, and you need to find a, a new city manager, you, they're going to, you know, you need to know what the job is, and they need to know what the job is, and so therefore, there is this, there is this precursor, if you will, of, of hats, all right? And, you know, I have told you all that I, that I am certainly open to the idea of continuing on as, as a part-time zoning administrator and administrative assistant for the Board of Listers, you know? But having said that, let's assume that I wasn't interested in, in those two positions. You, you have a decision to make as to whether or not you want that position or not, and there's lots of managers out there that, that absolutely hate zoning. It's, it's, it's a death wish upon some people, Rennie, I think.
I didn't want to.
I know you didn't. You know? So I'm a little bit of the odd duck. I love, I started in zoning, that was my first, I came to, came for the city, my first appointment was to the Zoning Board and Planning Commission in 1974, all right? And I tell this story to people, and I was living at home with my mom, and my dad had passed away, and so Dick Burke calls up and asks me if I want to be a, be a member on the DRB and the Planning Commission, you know? And I said, well, what's involved? Because I don't worry about it, they'll, they'll teach you, all right? And say, okay, so I said, fine, I got in there. So I go to this me, first meeting, and it's full of lawyers, and they're fighting about some right of way and all this stuff, you know? And so I wa, I go home, and my mom said, how'd it go? I said, you know, I don't know, I'm cracked up for this, this thing, all right? But then you, you know, start learning about and feeling comfortable about really what's going on. So, so anyway, my point is, is that's, that position, it really isn't for everybody. So you just need to, that's probably the key, that is somewhat important to kind of, to sort out at some point.
You can tell us what's missing and what's there. I did try and create buckets, though, so under duties, there are four main hats.
Okay, yeah.
So you've got operations and budget, you've got community engagement, you've got legal, you've got public relations.
Yeah.
And then items under there, and maybe they need to go other places, maybe there needs to be more subdivision, but yeah, that's...
Well, I think Mel brings up, the larger and perhaps even more important question is that we probably need to look at our staffing at City Hall in general. And as we look to the future, does it mean that we look at how the position of city manager is structured? Is there an additional person necessary? And should that be the case, that means we need to be developing a new job description now as well. So that's part of the discussion.
The other thing that I learned today, read these, but apparently we have to file, follow Chapter 37, Title 24, and also, we have to look at the, our charter and see what is in there about the city manager.
Both of those things are incorporated in here.
It's all, it's all in there?
I did the comparison of the statute, because I know there was a statute on managers, and...
You, you, you got everything. Okay. I haven't read that, I haven't dug that out.
Last line I'm going to go with is...
Yep.
Hours derived via 24 DSA Sections 1235 to 1238.
Excellent.
We also grabbed the same thing for city clerk, grabbed their structure too, and put it in.
So I would encourage everyone to, what your, what your timeframe is? Well, I was, I'd like to see something, I'd like to have everyone's input within the next couple of weeks, at the very least, so that we can look at adopting a description pretty darn soon.
The Vermont League of Cities and towns has a person that deals with all sorts of HR stuff, and they're happy to look at our job descriptions, our evaluation process, our hiring process, and our personnel policy, especially the personnel policy, because when she's, she's, she's happy that it was only 2005, it's the last time we really did a major rehaul, or revamp of it, but there are things that have changed that need to be updated, and she...
Talk to Abby?
I talked to Jill.
Have you talked to Abby today?
She mirrored everything that you just said, that there's, there's a lot there, they have a lot to offer, and are we getting ahead of ourselves?
Could be.
Could be.
So comments by the next meeting?
Okay, excellent, great.
Thank you. Thanks both Mark and Jeff for...
Your efforts so far, and we'll try to get some stuff back to you ASAP. So hiring process. I sent this out only because it's something that I know about, and it's, it's only a recommendation, it's nothing more than that, and very open, I even went out and did some search on the internet, and I, today I spent 45 minutes on the phone with Abby Friedman, and she gave me a list of stuff that the BLTC is willing to do, of course, it's all at a cost, but she talked about how the process has to kind of be done, and I'll give you a rough structure of it. If the board, hopefully I don't leave anything out, if the board appoints a committee, other than possibly some of them and others, then it becomes a public body, and they have to follow open meeting laws. So there's that process. If the board itself wants to do the interviewing, again, have to, everybody has to warn all these meetings, but you can go in executive sessions to, once you start the interview. So there's, there's, like I said, I spent 45 minutes, and I'm not going to stretch this meeting out, on everything that she laid out. There was some, some do's, some don'ts, some can'ts. You know, having possibly a search committee doing this, there's no law that says we have to advertise, period. We could just appoint somebody if we had a person in mind. It, it could be that simple. Or she's saying, what you want to have to do is have your document, your job description available, and keep things on an internet, like our, our web, and minimal amount of verbiage in your advertisement itself. There is the ICMA that we can also go to, and they also make recommendation, recommendations on job descriptions and evaluation processes. So I just found that out, but short, sweet. Feel free, if anybody wants to reach out to Abby, and she does go by Abby, I'll give you a phone number. It's, of course, 802-262-1926. Very, very informative, but get ready to spend some time on the phone with her. She is extremely thorough. They'll, they would come down, if they wanted to, they could put some package together for the council, come down and tell you what they have to offer. So just let's think about this, but at some point, we're going to have to move to the next step as to where we're going. Any other comments or questions? Lynn?
And it may be a technicality that I don't understand, since I haven't done this yet, but I would prefer to use the word selection panel rather than hiring panel. And wherever it says hiring, say selection, because it's, it, it would appear on here, unless I'm, don't understand it perfectly, is this panel is the hiring panel, and it's not. So I don't, I don't like the word hiring, I mean, maybe selection isn't the best word either, but not, definitely not hiring.
There's different phases, and, and I don't disagree with you, Lynn, but there's different phases in this whole process, so, and it's, it's totally open to changing any verbiage. So on the first line, council, to select, so, to select, how, what was your verbiage there?
Well, selection, dash, selection committee or something, selection panel.
Why don't you just shoot me an email, what you want?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I could see Lynn's point, because, because we're the, we're the hiring panel.
We are, yes, you're correct, Rennie.
And so the people, I think, might get a little confused as to, okay, is this group that's doing this, are they the ones that are actually going to be doing the hiring, and they are not.
I'll provide the recommendation.
Yeah.
We have the final say on who gets hired. You could have citizens on this panel, but there again, if they're appointed by the council, they have to follow the open meeting laws. So send me that email, just ask where this is, you know, even if you want to write on it and scan it and send it that way, that's, that's great, rather than me trying to make some notes right here. Any other comments, questions? Mel, we're on you.
So budget-wise, we spent a little bit of time talking about the police department earlier, and I still feel that we are okay at this point. One of the things I was looking at, and my budget might be a little bit more updated than yours, but, you know, we are just over the halfway point of, of winter, and when you go to public works, you know, you can see that relative to, relative to SALT, we are already at 57%. And I can, I really think that the, the number that you have in front of you of this $25,000, that you, you don't have the most recent bill of 3,400 in there. And so, I, not that this is any excuse, but Jim Laro told me that the state of Vermont has already spent their SALT budget, all right? And so we aren't in that kind of shape, but, you know, it really, you know, if this win, if this winter continues to carry on like this, you know, there's nothing worse than ice storms, you know? It'll be a challenge to, from a winter maintenance materials, you know? It is going to be a challenge. You can see that in the past years, you know, our overtime, we, we were always under. When you look at here, we're at 57%. And so you can see that this winter, you know, I don't want to say that it's been some awful, awful winter, it may feel awful, awful, but it's, it's really more of a normal type of a winter, you know, that we're, we're experiencing, and experiencing the overtime and the like. So in the past few years, you know, our, our surplus has been very much benefited from easy winters. And so I just don't, I just don't see that, but otherwise, we appear to be okay. If you, yeah, sure, yep.
How come all of our heating fuel isn't like public works in the negative?
Sure, well, here's the deal. First off...
I want to know how that happens.
Sure, I will, I will explain to you how that happens. So, so first off, we are in a little bit of a transition this year as it relates to fuel. For instance, we have some temporary propane tanks for the fire station, and we're going to be connected to Vermont Gas very soon. So this year, we typically pre-buy our fuel oil, and pre-buy our propane. The only pre-buy that we did this year was relative to the lease agreement that we have with the Opera House, this, under that lease, the city pays for the first 1,300 gallons. And so I pre-buy that 1,300 gallons, and whatever gets used beyond that 1,300 gallons is billed to the Opera House. I did not pre-buy, I don't even, I don't think you can pre-buy with Vermont Gas. So fire station, switching to Vermont Gas, pre-buy, so we've been paying as we go. Police station, going to be switching to Vermont Gas, so we're just pay as you go. Wastewater Treatment Plant, that's, we've converted that to propane, it's going to be longer for the switchover because the Vermont Gas isn't on that side of the river yet, Lowell. LOL, sorry. All right, now, so let me tell you, now getting back to how are they doing, because is it a negative number?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice. So, anyway, last year, the Public Works Garage, let's say that I pre-bought 1,000 gallons, they only ended up using 711, and so they ended the year with a $570 credit. Now, they did have a little delivery, and they did have a little repair job with Jackman's, and it ate up all but $385 of that credit. So, that, when I load in that credit, what is the minus? How much is it? Minus what?
450.
Okay, there it is, all right, so it's credit. Now, we've switched the wastewater treatment plant, you're going to want to ask him this question. We switched the wastewater treatment plant to propane in anticipation, that furnace just totally went kaput on us. So, we have a new propane-fired heating plant at the wastewater treatment plant in anticipation of Vermont Gas going over there. Ironically, we have two 500-gallon tanks of heating fuel at the wastewater treatment plant that had 800 gallons in it of fuel oil in those tanks with no furnace to burn it. And so, we have been transporting in 55-gallon, we have a nice, safe, little spigot electric pump to transfer fuel oil from the wastewater treatment plant tanks, and to put it into the tank at the Public Works Garage. 350 gallons has already been transferred, and I'm only going to do this journal entry once. So, once, it may take more than one season, but let's say that it's one season, and there's 700 gallons of fuel oil that gets taken out of the wastewater treatment plant tank and get pumped up there, I'll do a journal entry at $1.90 a gallon, so that that, and there'll be a credit in the wastewater treatment plant fuel oil for those 700 and some odd gallons. So, that's not going to stay like that forever. So, yeah, we're not selling fuel oil. The wastewater treatment is.
I thought you just don't change the place.
Yeah.
You didn't strike oil, and they all don't.
Yep, so.
Maybe they don't heat the place like they don't heat here.
I think, you know, I mean, it's really, to end the year with a $570 credit, you know, I hope they had the heat on last year, but it sounds like they didn't, so.
I have a question about the sewer. How are we balancing, I guess the word would be, 187% on the line maintenance and repair? Where are we making up that difference? It's.
If I have my waste sewer line and repair that, how we're over?
Yes, yes.
I will, you know, not making, how are we making it up? That's in trouble, all right? And I will tell you that we have the, and it's not like I'm getting into Vermont Gas' pocket, but we have spent a lot more money this year on sewer line cleaning, you know, with hair guns, all right? So, we're over, there's no question about it, and I don't juggle the books. So, and I don't want to say that we're done, because if something happened, if a sewer line gets clogged, and we have to have hardigans come down, and they, you know, flush out this line, that's the kind of bill that we get, all right? So, you know, yeah, that's in trouble.
Okay, so how are we going to get it out of trouble? I mean, where are we going to balance this? From another account?
Well, we don't juggle that, we charge thing to where they're going to charge.
Right, I understand.
So, your concern, and am I, all right, is are we going to come under the 680, at the end of the day, are we going to come under the $680,000? And I think that we have a challenge on our hands, I really do. I, you know, you can see treatment chemicals, all right, we're at 40%, we're over 50% of the year, so, you know, that's, we have some line items in here are okay, but that is definitely a challenge, and I, you know, I can tell you, I know your heating fuel is off, so I think it's going to be problematic, Lynn, I really do.
Any other questions, Mel, on the budget?
What about capital improvement?
Oh, sure. So, this is a report that I give you from time to time, and one of the things to, just to remind you of is, under the Water Tower Reserve, we started the year with $208,000, and we have taken in $72,000 so far. We have spent $18,497. There actually is another report, because I'm sure that some of you, including myself, are saying, why did we spend that $18,479? There's a spreadsheet that I'll do for you for the next meeting to show what that money's been used for. I can tell you that you allocated money for the sidewalk project, that could be the only one, but I will let you know specifically what that money has been spent for, so that you know that it's been spent for stuff that you authorized it to be spent for. So, I'll get you that report at the next meeting. So, one of the things just to keep in mind, relative to the Water Tower Continuation Fund, what we do is we wait until the end of the year, get the total of all of the revenue, and if it equaled exactly $100,000, 25% of that goes to the continuation. So, my point is, is that when Joan gets a lease check of $1,813.77, she doesn't put 75% of it here and 25% of it here, she just puts it in the Water Tower Fund, and we do a journal entry on June 30 to get it in the right bucket. So, you should not assume that you've got $273,000 available, because 25% of that $72,000 is headed towards the continuation. The other thing, just to keep in mind while I'm on that subject of the continuation, the, don't forget, you authorize this loan of $60,000 from the Water Tower Continuation to pay for the two police cruisers, and we haven't pushed that money across, Joan, just to let you know that. I know that's the reason why you haven't pushed it, because it's not on your spreadsheet, right? Right? But it's, no, but you normally, you're, well, normally, there's this thing that you do. Yeah, well, that's a quarterly, that is a quarterly thing. It's from the Police Department to pay back Continuation Fund, we just haven't, it's not normal, but we will do it. So, anyway, that 35 is going to turn into 95, but again, that is that, the Continuation Fund, which is supposed, according to the policy, you would use that when the time comes that we no longer have any antennas on the tower. So, anyway, this is where you're at with all these other funds.
Any more questions? If not, we'll move to item C.
C, process for amending the city charter. I think that I agreed to give you a calendar, and instead of giving you a calendar, I gave you copies of some statutes, all right? And so, basically, how the system works for amending a city charter, you are required to have two public hearings, and the public hearing, the two public hearings, the first one, as indicated in here, you know, has to be held before you adopt the warning for a public vote. So theoretically, it can take 80 days to do a charter change, because the first, when you warn your hearing, the warning has, it's not like zoning where it's a 15-day warning. It's, there is a 30-day warning, it's at least 30, not more than 40, before your public hearing. And then, once you have your public hearing, you adopt a warning of not less than 30 nor more than 40 for the vote, all right? So, you cannot do it in less than 60, and it can take you 80 days to make that change. So, I think at the last meeting, you know, I was thinking, well, let me just see if we can't still jam this thing in for a vote on March, and the next day, Joan and I spent some time fighting about the statutes, and she won, and I lost, and we, anyway. So, that's how it works. So, if you're, now Joan has a meeting scheduled for, a BCA meeting scheduled for January 31, and, you know, I'm assuming that there'll be some kind of recommendation coming out of that meeting, and then, you know, you obviously could consider going through a, since the voters are going to be voting in August and in November, you could conceivably have a charter change and have it all ready, and send it up, get it up to the legislature before they even show up, and if it can go to the municipal ops or government ops committee or whatever very quickly, I mean, it is possible that you could get a charter change in place, this is ambitious, in place for the March of 2019 vote. That still would be ambitious, if otherwise, it's really 2020, without really getting some cooperation from the legislature to expedite that change.
Run rewriting the charter, so.
That section or the whole charter?
The whole.
Oh, the whole charter?
I'm following Winuski's decision, because if you look at the titles, Winuski has Chapter 17 and Chapter 19. Chapter 17, redacted. He just got rid of the whole thing, and in 2013, put on a brand-new charter.
Yeah.
And when I was reading ours, like, you know, go 400 rods north until you get to the pile of sticks and stones, turn left.
Wow, it's a 1788. 1788 charter.
We have the authority to decide where the blacksmiths are in town.
Did you change that?
We still want to know where they are, but we might want to broaden, so there are things. So, I kind of, I downloaded all of the city charters that are available, and then I took a really close look at Winuski's, because theirs is only five years old, so it's already passed all of the eyeballs that would have looked at it and ripped it apart, so it was a good place to start.
We have a lot of things to update in ours, you know, get rid of the grand juror positions, there's no duties with it, those have been repealed, voting age, I think it says 21 to vote.
It does have men and women.
What's that?
It does allow men and women.
Oh, that's good.
But it just says 21.
Change the senior alderman to.
Deputy mayor, which is actually what the duty of the senior alderman is.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say it in the charter.
So, anyways, it's not ready for primetime at all, but I'll kind of lay it out a little bit, send it out to this, and then I assume we'll see where we are and what kind of timing we can do.
Okay, City Hall Conference Room Project. After the last meeting where you all said, tear down that wall, I made a contact with the Department of Labor, Labor and Industry, and to find out whether or not we needed a permit, and basically, if you're just remodeling a wall, that's considered maintenance and repair, but eliminating a wall is considered construction in their view, and therefore, I filled out, I immediately filled out a construction permit and paid the $80 fee, and sent that to the Rutland Office so that we get a construction permit for this project. There is no plumbing permit required, because the so-called plumbing permit is only applicable to plumbing, not heating, all right? So, the only, we need to remove a heating unit, I met with Tim Ryan last night, and, you know, we're going to get rid of that one unit, he doesn't feel that we need to, we don't need to move it to another location, he says that there's fine. I've been in touch with Andy RCI, and he is scheduling time to come and demo electrical and get his electrical permit. So, we're moving along at a little better than our past pace, so hopefully we get that permit soon, and we can, we'll put Mike to work on the next phase of demolition. All right, all right, so that's that one. Encore for Gen Solar. So, here's kind of some not-so-good news. The solar system that was, that is at our wastewater treatment plant was supposed to generate 200,000 kilowatts a year, and we were supposed to save $4,100, and as it turned out, it's never done 200,000, it's maybe done 180 or so, whatever, but last year, the, we think that the upper panel went, was down for like a month or so, and that's why you see, it isn't just because the sun wasn't shining, or there was snow on top of the panels, I mean, really, I think there was a whole section that wasn't making any electricity at all, and so you see those numbers down. So, the point is, is that there was really only 166,000 kilowatts created, and our savings, instead of being 4,100, was just over $3,000. So, I just want to let you know that, that we can't make the sun shine, but those are the numbers, and that savings is wastewater department budget, Lynn, so let's just add that $1,000 problem to the list. So, that's that one. Audit report and financial statements, the reason why I put that on the agenda is I really thought that these would be in front of you tonight, because according to their auditors, they mailed them to us on Thursday, and my last emailed them to me, or, you know, she said mail, and they were not in our mailbox, I'm assuming we didn't miss a slip or something, Joan, so, anyway, you know, I'll apologize that they aren't in front of you, and when they show up tomorrow, we will get them to you, or let you know, and you can stop by and get them, and then we can review those at the next meeting. So, I think that's all I have, I don't have any other topics, other than, there is, on your way out, if you want to take a look at what I've put on the wall up there, if you recall the city, I want to use the word "participated," if you recall, the Lake Champlain program has this grant process, and there was a $50,000 grant that went to the Watershed Consulting Associates, the city allocated $10,000 to this program for the following projects. One was to map all of our sewer lines, so that we know where our clay tile lines are, where our transite pipes are, you know, we just have all of that on some good mapping. They're also going to map all of our stormwater system, of which there really is not, we have a lot of culverts, but there really isn't a lot of stormwater systems, and also map our, any stormwater ponds. And then the other part of this grant was to do three 30% design projects of stormwater management systems. We had a committee meeting the other day, Shannon Haggott, Mike Winslow, myself, Claire Tebs, and the three, the two of the projects that we're going to look at is a stormwater treatment system that's behind the wastewater treatment plant, another one is on high school property, of which I sent an email to Joanne to let her know that, get her permission, I should say, that there's some field people looking at their stormwater detention pond at the high school. The third one was to look at what I call the Len Duffy Lot, which is on the, it's on West Main Street, there's a lot there, I talked to Len today, and I'm not sure if we're going to be involved in a stormwater design for that one or not, so we may have to come up with a third project. There was also three renderings involved with this project, and one of the renderings is on the wall, which really, it's really a downtown streetscape project, is what it is, with an eye to stormwater management. So, on your way out, you should take a look at that. We don't want to go into the 30% design mode on that one, because we think that that requires a lot of public input. When you'll see it, when you see it, and you see the change in parking and the additional bike lanes, you'll, it's, you know, it's an interesting concept. And then there's two other renderings that are going to be done, and it escapes me what those two are, but those products should be coming to you pretty soon, I think their deadline is the first of March, so, so that's that.
Local option tax, and basically Cracker Barrels are going to be Saturday, February 17th, 10:00 a.m. here at the fire station, I haven't meant to do that with you today, Joan, has reserved this, and Tuesday, February 20th, at 7:00 p.m. you today, Joan, has reserved this. And Tuesday, February 20, at 7:00 p.m., it's really to kind of feel the people out and see what they have for questions, so that I can somehow formalize those and get them to the council, so that whatever way that we end up recommending, if we recommend anything, we have a chance to massage and try to get what they want, what they're, what they'd like to see. So, it's, it's trying to get the, the citizens and the businesses interactive in this process. And also, we'll, short period, be allotted to just talk about truck traffic in Regens and see what they have for concerns or possible solutions or recommendations. So, there's two there. Not throwing that at you.
I have mine.
Yes, you do. Take one, pass it around. This is a document dated for tomorrow. Tomorrow, they're going to do a press release, Mayor's Coalition and Mont Pierre, and those are some of the things that they feel that, I shouldn't say they feel, there's some of the stuff I agree with, some of the stuff I don't totally agree with, but it's one of those political things, majority kind of rules, and we work together to come up what is, what we feel is a common good for everybody involved. So, I know there's something in there Lynn will have a little problem with, because it deals with some real estate business sales, but, so, we'll see where that goes. And the last item I have is, I didn't put anybody's name on it, so, again, I sent you an email saying that you were going to get copies of some emails, sorry about that, Mel, and I chose to, end up chosen, choosing to print them out and put them in order, rather than trying to send them in separate different lots and get things confusing. I've already let Mel and Joan know that these emails are going out, and it's an item that will be discussion, discussing at the February, next February meeting. So, it's, it's some reading in there, and I, it's up to you as to how you pursue it, and if you want to, doing an interview of anybody, any of the parties, to see if it, you agree, who you agree with, but I think this is an item that we need to take a stance as, as a council, not as an individual. If I was to, once you read it, if I was to take a stance, it might not be satisfied. So, please read them, and talk to Mel, Joan, and Shannon, if you wish, and the only thing I'd like back on one-on-one basis is, after you read it, do you want Shannon here at that meeting for that?
Make sure you know who the Shannon is, because we have more than one Shannon, Mike, so it's not Shannon Haggott.
No, it's not Shannon Haggott, of which Shannon did offer to participate in the selection process, but. So, based on that, one, one final item. Because of the wife's workload, and trying to get preparations done, because I want to do a PowerPoint, and if anybody else would like to see something in a PowerPoint at the city meeting, going to try to keep it as short, brief as, as possible, but do the usual, or do that I, stuff that I have in the past. Mark, for your amendment that you did on requiring people to show up at the meeting and speak, I have so far got eight out of 18 responses, and the other ones have been invited, and they, they claim that there's going to be somebody there, but they don't have a name for me yet. But, oh, they, they will. So, based on that, next item is adjournment. May I have a motion?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Lowell, seconded by Rennie, all those in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Mel, I'm following.